Rescue, what is it called? Have they done the funding now? So rescue something.
State and local funding mechanism.
Yeah, we have.
Projects.
Yeah, Representative Bloomingdale's with us this morning. Questions if she had any answers to it, I guess. Have anything on that?
I. It can't, you know, this is the second year it's come out and I will have been supervised for a little over a year. There's not a big window in there for a shovel ready project like he were discussing. And it just seems funny that they don't give us a little more time to put stuff together, you know? Because the only ones that got shovel ready projects are your big counties like. So that kind of, you know, I see that stuff come through and I go, what good does that do a small county unless you got? Yeah, a whole bunch of projects sitting out there ready to go. Am I reading that right?
I think so. I know there's one in O Sage that they're working on and it was one that they were kind of ready to go with. It's a internet access high speed internet for Orchard and they already kind of planned it. Funds went up as everything else has gone up in the last year. So they were only able to get Mitchell for the money available and looking for. Orchard project. But they had, they had that ready to go. It might be something that you have a project that's kind of ready. Fits. How they have it shovel ready in today's world.
And I was reading also, there's like a two page deal on stuff that. Different areas and, and the things that you could use it upon. Is there anything in our county that even fits in there? Then did anybody look at it? I didn't see it. I saw conservation on there and I saw, I saw cybersecurity on there. And it's like, you know, I don't know how big of a project this kind of stuff would be.
Anything you want to make it, I suppose.
Well, it's pretty broad.
In the way I kind of see, you know, this came up last year too. It comes up about every year. It's just one of those things where. You kind of plan to do your projects and if this comes about, then you're ready to go. So if you want to look into doing something, we better start planning for next year. Because then if all of a sudden they come up and say, hey, this time of year is going to look to give you a two week window. All right, we've got this project we were wanting to do anyways. Let's see if we can't get some funding for it to help us out. You know, that's almost the thing. It's, it's basically you start planning a year ahead of the way I kind of see it, you know, so.
Do you want to explain the windmill thing? The windmill bill so you can get it directly from that.
Nothing changes in that windmill bill. The only thing in that windmill bill is. Saying that when they regenerate, if a window is assessed at thirty percent. And after twenty years or whatever the timeframe and they, they come in and redo regenerate. That valuation does not change. You cannot go back to zero. You're not starting over. You get one shot at building up to the thirty percent. You stay at that thirty percent valuation. That offers some consistency for the counties, for the schools. Unless everybody knows exactly where they are and it won't be any change.
Right.
That's the only thing that changed in that bill.
What was with the, the utility tax?
That's already there. If you choose not to do the special assessment, if you're not zoning to do the special assessment, it's already there.
Okay, so they're making, they're, they're forcing you to do the special assessment. Or, or you get the utility tax.
You already choose. You do one or the other.
Right, yeah. So, but the utility taxes significantly less.
No.
It's not.
No.
Okay.
Most of the estimates I've received, they are not, they are. More. But a little less predictable. Okay, so, so a lot of counties, I don't think very many windmills use the replacement tax. Solar, you know, they, they all have to.
Right.
But I don't think very many windmills do. But I got some calculations from a couple people of a solar, not a solar, excuse me, windmill and. Midam and they were just saying that they thought. Had to go with the, the replacement tax. That would be a little bit higher.
Than the thirty percent.
Than the thirty percent or the, depends on your, your tax on the thirty percent.
Is that the deal where if you didn't go with the tip, the thirty percent that you would go to forty percent? Remember reading something in there about that? Where some of them.
There's only, there's only the two options. It's always been the two options. Since they started this.
Yeah, that's all I'd ever seen. What we're trying to do with that bill is just make sure there's some stability because as I was telling these guys earlier, two counties to our west went back to zero.
Yes, especially the regeneration part. That was always a question.
Yeah.
I'm going through.
And they just want to say, when you regenerate, your valuation stays the same. The only way your evaluation goes down is when you take that windmill out of the ground, one hundred percent gone. Then it goes back to Agland or whatever it was before.
It would, the ground's still the same, property's still the same line was, you lose the tax on the term. Because you're still getting the tax, Agland tax.
Reverse back to rest.
I just under the impression that, that the utility tax was significantly less. And that basically they're forcing you to, to run four twenty seven B or if you don't, then you're going to end up with less tax. Which I don't, I don't agree with. I just, I'm, I'm big on local control. That's where my big push is. We, we ought to be the ones that get a little more. Say because we're responsible to our tax. I just, the state and local thing is, that's a modesty a little bit.
No, everything stays exactly the same. Just wanted to give you that security that we're not going to allow these windmill companies to come in and say, oh no, we're going to start over. We're going to go back to zero.
Right.
For seven years.
Right.
And keep doing that every twenty years.
So what if, you know, after twenty years, twenty five years, they finally repurpose, regenerate the double capacity. So the value of those windows are doubled. We have the option of going back and starting over. If it was more end of, end of nation, I mean, you know, where we make more money. Or the, the value would be better. Would we have that option or is it always going to stay that way?
I believe it's written in that will stay at thirty percent, but I can double check if the county has the options. They know we want to go to zero.
Yeah.
I'm not sure why you'd want to go to zero.
Well, like I said, the only reason, so you take a look at the ones in the Bristol area, you know, they're less than a megawatt.
Yeah.
So if they could take them to two point five. Yeah, I mean, I.
Certainly what they produce, that goes to the utility replacement.
Right.
But it's the cost of the repurposing. Is that actually more? Would thirty percent of that be more?
Yeah. Sure. Yeah, that's what you'd have to figure out. That's why I was curious. I mean, if, if the value was there where you would capture more by going back to zero than you would by just staying the same. I mean, you'd have that seven year lag period, then you could also start over with the TIF process on that after twenty years and utilize that. But, yeah, thank you. Does anything else?
But you, you either do TIF for the whole county? Or you do utility tax for the whole county. You can't.
Always have.
You, but I mean, you can't come in here and say, well, we'd like to TIF those sixty and the other twenty, we'd like to do the utilities tax on. You can't do that.
Cause you have to.
You could do project by project.
Yeah, you can't split up.
You could do, you could do the whole project and Deer Creek utility tax, but you can't divide it up.
Right.
Fifty, forty, forty.
Yeah, you can't divide a product.
Okay, got you.
But all the projects don't have to be the same.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, that was my question. Do you have to keep them all the same in the county? That's what you do.
Not the whole county, just the.
Just the project itself, like Deer Creek by itself.
Yeah. Cool. Okay. Appreciate it.
I hope that cleared it up.
Yeah, well, helps.
I'll go check on the, bring it backwards if they want to.
I'm, so I restarted picking post and approving.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I'll make the most appropriate agenda.
I'll say it.
All those fairies. Thank you. All right, Rich.
All right, so today we were going to talk about DOT program and budget. Unfortunately. The county engineer's website went down Friday. And I don't have access. So I printed everything out before then on vacation on Wednesday and have some preliminary stuff, but. What I didn't, I had some changes in there. The map that you have in front of you. I don't think will change other than some project numbers when I submitted. And you can see some red, red ink on there. Those are the projects in the next five years. The Greenlands are fiscal twenty three and there are a lot of, and some of those are pending on whether or not, like AJ, if we do any of that TIF. The ones that say local bridges, when I submitted everything and I wanted to put those two with, with our HBP funds or their federal bridge funds. We overspend, so I cannot put anything in. If we do what we have right now and fiscal twenty three will be borrowed four and a half years ahead in our bridge funds. And then it's going to take local dollars to do anything else that we want to do with bridges. The foreign market account, that's kind of. That's kind of a limbo because I'm still trying to work with the DOT on getting that transfer to Mitchell County that we had a few years back that they haven't done yet. Pay for Xenia that are happening. But as far as the projects go here, these are the projects that are slated for the next five years. And like I always tell you, they're always subject to change based on what mother nature does to our roads and what we have for funding. I know that gets kind of messy. I can clean it up. What I wanted you to see on here is costs, traffic counts and where these things are located. Sometimes it blurs up the, the roads that are getting worked on, but. We can get a cleaner map another time if you want to see more, but the most important thing right now is look at, you know, the current year coming up, this federal fiscal, fiscal twenty three. And what we have going on there. So if you look at the five year program sheet. That's going to show you all the projects. I got to make an amendment or a change on whether it's got a wrong description on that. It's not a project. The more important thing, because what you see on the map are the same dollar amounts. The very last page gives you an update on what we plan on spending in swap FM local and federally from twenty three to twenty seven. The problem with this is it doesn't give you the total amounts for the, all the years combined. The final, the final program would give us that summary, but because I wasn't able to print it out for you, it just gives you an idea. And, and like I said. You're going to see foreign market funds, a million dollars in twenty three, three point nine and twenty four. Nine hundred thousand and twenty five, four point three and twenty six. I don't know that we even have that much foreign market money. But in case something happens or we have TIF dollars, if we have, I shouldn't use TIF. If we have extra local dollars available, we can pay the foreign market account, the balance if we don't have it. But these are projects that I programmed that need to be done, just like local is three point seven million. That again, for twenty three AJ depends on whether we TIF for those roads. That's for that dollar. If we don't TIF for it, we don't do them. So when you look at the budget side, well. When I give you the final budget and you guys approve for me to spend that budget. That's great. Everybody says, well, they approved you to spend it. No, we have an understanding that you approve me to spend it as long as we're going to use the. The revenues are coming in to do those projects too. So I want you guys to be aware that even though you approve my DOT budget, I'm not doing a project unless the funds come in. Because some people say, well, they approved it. They got to give it to you. No, they don't. In my opinion, this is something we've been talking about for a while as far as if the revenue is there, we're going to do these projects and if it's not, we're not going to do them. So just so you're clear on that, that I'm not doing anything because I'm not going to jeopardize our ending balances to show that we've overspent. You guys got to scramble the fine money. That's not, that's not the right thing to do. What I'm showing you is the need for the funds. And if we can do them, we'll do them. We might have to talk about doing some lower cost maintenance on roads if we can't find the funding, do other things. And I hate to use the word seal coat, so I'll use a different word and it's called. I don't remember what it's called now. There's a different type of chip seal out there that, that seals a road. The, the, the name of it escapes me. It's got a higher, it's got a larger aggregate in it than a regular chip seal. I think it goes from three eighths to a half inch. But it's the same process, you know, you get, and there's some roads that maybe that are hard surface. I, for instance, you know, Wheeler Wood from Highway nine north is a highly travelable, but you go south and it ends on a gravel road. Well, maybe that's a good place to put that, that chip seal type of turn down because it's less traffic. And you just need to seal the road to keep the water out. So we may start having to look in, but those are only five year fixes. They're a lot cheaper than doing a construction project. They might be fifty thousand a mile versus three hundred thousand a mile. They still cost money. So. I called it, just so you know, you know, I think there are sixty percent of the counties out there that can't get their final ones approved today or tomorrow with the. My website enough, so. We'll probably be in violation, but there's going to be a good understanding why I'm violation for not turning our program and budget down on fifty. Because you guys need to approve it. We can't approve it today because I don't have the final stuff for you to approve. On the budget side. You're going to look at, there are two things. When you look at this one, I've kind of, when you look at the current fiscal twenty two year column. Twenty twenty two column. That column I've made an amendment to, we haven't done an amendment yet for the original, but when I programmed twenty three, I plan on doing amendment. And what I plan on doing is amending the equipment budget in twenty two for six hundred thousand dollars. We should have that money available to us and I want to do that so we can buy two of those motor grinders. Right now our budget's only at a hundred thousand. So if I add another five hundred to thousand to it, we can get the motor graders that we need. That lowers our carryover balance for this fiscal year to one point six million, but. I think that, and, and, and two, when you look at fiscal twenty three now, there's a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar reimbursement for bridge replacement funds in the revenue side. That goes away because I didn't get in there to change those local bridge projects, bridge products that ended up being local. I wasn't able to take them out. So, or I forgot to. So that shows our carryover balance of nine hundred and seventy one thousand at the end of this. At the end of fiscal twenty three, well. When I take that nine hundred and fifty, I was going to live this with twenty one thousand dollars carryover balance, but I think the way things are looking right now. Our current budget, even with an amendment, is still going to carry us over a decent amount of money. We are unspent yet. We don't, haven't bought all our salt yet, but we'll still have a favorable carryover balance for this year, but that's what I need this program. Back up and running so I can get those numbers put in there. So what I'm saying is I'm programming a lot of things for fiscal twenty three. We have a really tight carryover balance, but again, it all depends on what we do for projects and what we get into. The reason I'm doing this with equipment is we can't TIF. We can't, we can't TIF it, but. Other counties have found a way to do that, but we can't. We're not going to.
Right.
So the only we have is local dollars. And so until I can get you guys the final thing, I'm hoping that by next week we can put it on the agenda again. So Jackie will just put it on the agenda again for next week. Until, I don't know, I, when I called, I called the service bureau and I called the DOT and I said, hey, look, what's going on? And service bureau wouldn't say what happened. But the DOT said, we're going to have to do something about this because you and about fifty percent of the other county engineers needed this today and they're going to have it. So. I guess that doesn't worry me so much as. If you guys want to look at something yet for next week, if you want to tell me there's some of the projects you want to look at, go ahead. Now we've got a little bit more time and I should probably give this to you a lot sooner than I did so you can look at it, but. You know, we've talked about projects enough to know. I gave you guys that summary here a couple of weeks ago on what we thought we needed right away for bridges. So. The thing that, you know, the thing that I'm concerned about right now until I can get back in the program is that carryover balance for fiscal twenty three at the end. Twenty thousand dollars isn't enough. Because we never know what the season can do, but again, this budget is different in the county when I turned in in December because a lot's changed. We didn't use a lot of salt this year. We're going to change, you know, I've changed, I changed next year's budget from the county budget, but we probably won't buy as much salt. And what's really goofy is I haven't even brought any of our salt in for fiscal twenty two. They want my order for twenty three by the end of the week.
Cool.
So they're on top of stuff, but, so we're going to probably end up ordering less salt. We have a full shed. We'll have a full shed when we get it brought in here. We're, but then again, you just never know what winter does. So. Well, it's just one of like say, less salt, less overtime.
Yeah.
Fairly mild, so that helps. Except for the fuel prices went up, but you know, that's why I don't like having that low of carryover balance. I like, and they tell us that we should probably run. Twenty percent. It seems high when you say twenty percent of your normal budget you should have in carryover. So when you look at a four million dollar budget, they want you to have over a million and a half carryover because of uncertain things. And we've been carrying that over and it all depends on timing projects and how they get paid like I tell you every year. So. It's tough to budget when you've got such a moving target, I guess. It's like trying to figure out where the wave, how high the waves are going to get. When a storm comes, but anyway, the projects are there that we've got planned forecast and that's probably programmed for more than we have money for. But we prioritize what we can and hopefully next week their site will be up and running and we'll be able to get you something that you can include for. Something to digest a little bit. Do you have any questions on, on anything with that? I mean, I know you just got to look at it, but as far as budgeting and programming go. Any clients of plan, I mean, like I said. Our plans are always going to change. They always such additions. I mean, we've got some heart, we, we, the, the, the road. We have these, the STP project now that we're going to have to use federal funds on. That one's programmed. That one's in there and that's been planned. So that, we, we know our paving projects, you know, we've got the bridge project that's been let, that'll get done this year. So these smaller ones want to see what the bridge funding is. We're probably going to need more consultant labor on some of these because we're talking bridges in that boxes because they're larger than what we can. Probably put a bridge in for, but just so you know. And I told the board last week in Mitchell County, I apologize for all the doodle things, but. The last doodle that I sent out is the one that we need to figure out what's working and I still can't. I still can't take down a day yet. I gave everybody two weeks and there's line on AJ, you must have a slam schedule or something because I didn't see much beyond this week for your availability. So. I was hoping to get it done this week because. So was I. It's going to get worse for me. It's going to get worse for you. Well, I know that and but. I'll make it work. No, but I haven't had responses from about half of, half of boards yet. So I'm like, I don't, I'm trying to schedule this. I just can't. I just get, throw a date, throw a date down and just tell us. Yeah. That's the best way. It's only going to be an hour, hour and a half. So. I hope it's not an hour and a half unless you guys want to eat. Well, you know. But yeah, just throw a date down. I don't, I don't care. I'll get there. I just, it was easier just to know that people had open schedules, what fits in your schedule. So it's not so tough that you have to scramble things around, but it seems like as we go week to week. Things get put into our schedules and then that changes. Well, I said I was going to be available now and now, but I don't have any information from, I think, maybe. I don't know who's all responded lately, but it's been out, I put it out. A week ago today, I think I changed that and because you weren't, you didn't get it and you didn't get it because I had your email addresses messed up. So I resent a new one.
You got our responses, didn't you?
I don't remember who I got responses from. I, I think I got. I don't know if I got marks, but I think I got here too.
I thought he gave it to you original or maybe on.
I do. Well, see what happened.
You changed the.
Right. See what happened, right? So what happened was that one, that the one previous to this one, when I said from eleven o'clock to five o'clock, it said block the whole day out. And I'm like, no, I need hour increments. So I redid it in hour increments. So you can pick the hour increments you're available for. So.
I'm, I'm free Tuesday and Thursday this week.
Yeah, I know. So I.
I don't know, Friday too.
Friday I'm gone, but.
Okay.
So. We can put that down. This, this week, yeah. If they want to do it tomorrow, this week doesn't look good for do nothing. So.
Okay. No, that's what, Thursday or Wednesday. That's.
Like so.
Next Wednesday's good.
If it's after our meeting on Monday or after their meeting on Tuesday, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
That'd be. I, I always thought that was always the best time. Mondays and Tuesdays. Right. You guys normally have stuff kind of. Yeah, I don't plan much on Mondays other than this and that's something else, you know, so. All right. I, like I said, that was only. It was a lot. I don't know why it was so much easier before to schedule something, but now it just seems more difficult to try and schedule.
Supervisors. You got two more.
Well, now we need three there for quorum. So if they, well, really can't make it work, then I guess we just have to get it done. Be nice to have everybody there. So if there's discussion, I want everybody's discussion, just three discussions. You have any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Claims.
Or should they approve claims?
So a second.
Second.
Movement second. Discussion. Paranormal, I.
I.
Same time. Post approval claims.
This is the one that was paid. Before your approval.
Yeah.
It's a wet bill. It's three, thirty four hundred dollars. For gas, for transit.
Oh. You. Washington, the post, post approval claim.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's moving second. Discussion. Who knows?
I. So.
The. Report.
Was it? Sure.
Second motion to approve the report. I'm at the most. Second. Second. Question. Oh, since I'm. A little palmer.
Yeah. I'm going to think here on the back on this one.
Okay. Payroll. Yeah. Well. Justice, Justin Brown. Motion to approve the payroll funds.
Changes.
Changes.
Much of the payroll changes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second, discussion. You know, I. Both same time. This will do. So. Yeah.
Anybody? Was the motion.
A motion to approve your seller changes.
I second it.
You look at license. Cigarette.
Yep.
Sure. Welcome, sir. Their motion for the cigarette license.
Which.
They said, okay. Cigarette, they're both, okay.
Yeah.
Take motion. Liquor license.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll say it.
Moving second. Is there any further discussion? Very minimal, as a favor, say I. All same time, motion. Okay. Resolution. Oh, now cigarette.
And you don't need to say anything.
Okay, this is for come and go cigarettes. A promotion to prove cigarette license.
Motion to prove.
Second.
I'll second.
Moving second and improve discussion. Hearing none, all is fair, say I. All same time. Now the resolution. Resolution. With the dis- dispersment of funds for the American Rescue Plan Act. Whereas on March eleventh, twenty twenty, President Biden signed the hundred and nine trillion dollar American Rescue Plan Act. Whereas Worth County applied for and has been received the first. Trans of funds for the American Rescue Plan Act totaling seven hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty six dollars and fifty cents. Whereas the Worth County Board of Supervisors have reviewed some requests and determined some that will qualify for the American Rescue Act. Whereas based on distribution guidelines from the US Department of Treasury, the following project has been approved for the use of said funds. Phone system update for the county office, eighteen thousand nine oh nine, campground wifi project fifty six nine twenty seven. They resolved the Worth County Board of Supervisors endorsed dispersment of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the items listed and authorized the order to make these payments as they are presented. I will take him motion to approve the resolution. I will take him motion to approve the resolution.
I have a motion to approve that resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Move in second. Lober.
Hi.
Stone.
Hi.
Baby, I, emotional care. Okay, so it is nine o'clock, John Downs.
Yeah, trying to get in.
Try to get him, he's trying to get in.
Hey, John.
There it is.
Good morning. How are we doing?
How we're doing, I think.
That's it, that's right. It's every bit of Monday morning.
There you go. So, we're gonna do twenty twenty two urban renewal plan and map amendment discussion, alright?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know the extent to which you want me to lead things off, but Ja- Jackie and Amy Bjork, my colleague and I visited a bit last week, just kind of running through with Jackie, some of the thing, items, level of detail that we would need in order to be able to really be, kind of begin the formal urban renewal amendment process at the board level. And I, I do think we're getting there, there, there are parts of it that have certainly started to shape up, but as we noted to Jackie, that there are still some areas in which we, we kind of have some uncertainty about how to, how to populate the documents and how to describe and put a public face on, on some of the things that maybe are being proposed, so. One thing for sure, you know, Jackie's been working hard with respect to real property descriptions for your major TIF producing property, which is, you know, the, the, the wind farm development. In addition to that, before we begin the formal process, we'll need confirmation about whether or not we are needing to add any additional taxable parcels that will be TIF producers, and I, I don't see that clearly, but that, that's something that you folks at the county probably need to continue thinking about and maybe work towards a final initial decision. It can always be revisited with future amendments later, but so the idea would be we know that the, the wind turbines are gonna produce TIF for you, but what else are, are there individual taxable parcels at the Manly Terminal or what have you, that you know you're gonna be doing work with here and that you're gonna want to have producing TIF for you as the fiscal years go forward here, the next couple of years, well, those would be candidates to be added, so. That discussion probably needs to be had. Aside from that, we then kind of need to sharpen up our understanding and how to describe any urban renewal projects that the county is intent on undertaking and I'll, I'll just give you kind of the, the thumbnail of the project overview that Amy and I discussed with, with Jackie. And of course, you folks can add to or subtract from this list as you see fit, but we, we do need direction. One, one that we know is at, at least in the cards potentially would be the courthouse that's been discussed. In addition, there's been talk about adding a series of county infrastructure, transportation infrastructure, bridge, road, culvert highway types of projects. That would be a second project candidate. There has, of course, also been discussion regarding economic development support for a natural gas line and that development, that, that would be a third project. And I, I believe there's also been potential discussion of maybe some other economic development incentive related projects, whether it be a, a TIF rebate for a developing business or that type of thing out at the Manly Terminal, uh, we've heard allusion to that sort of thing as well. So ultimately, to get you folks started, we need that list pinned down, and I, I may be missing one or two, or you may decide you're not ready to take on one or, one or more of those, that's, that's your prerogative, but the, that list needs to be refined. And then for each of those projects, we need to ask ourselves the, the question, number one, do we need to be adding any ground to our urban renewal area in order to accommodate that project? So just to illustrate it, if the courthouse is going to be a declared project and that property is not currently in your area, we are gonna make sure, you know, we're gonna need to make sure that that property gets added. Why? Because you can't exercise any urban renewal powers unless you're operating inside or on property contained in your urban renewal area, so w- we have to ask that question, do we need to deal with the property? And then, you know, the, the other question is just, can we give just a basic overview description of the project? Where is it happening? When roughly? Not, not to the minute, more like a, a year range, when will it be undertaken? Who's doing it? Why are we doing it? And probably most important from, for technical compliance, what is the maximum amount of TIF that we would claim for each such project that we're declaring? Once we've got those information items, then we can come back to you and start setting a date for a public hearing, rolling out a, a drafted plan amendment and, you know, getting going with the formal process. I'll stop there.
Adam, now, John, you have our, or you have a list of stuff that I've sent you, correct, that we know of parcel numbers anyways, I should say.
I, I do, I do have, yeah, I, I've got a lot of emails, because we, we've been having these conversations for for quite some time, and I, I know that discussions have continued to occur, et cetera, so I need some help out of you folks of kind of refining this down to where that maybe Jackie can be the one who feeds us the final information to say, okay, we're ready to start the process, these are the projects we want to include. These are the parcels that we need to have included, let's roll this thing out. Because it, it, as you might imagine, if, if we get a bunch of different information pieces over an arc of many, many months from a variety of sources, it's very difficult for us to tell what the board wants included in this formal process. So if you don't mind, we'll ask your help that way of trying to filter this and, and kind of distill it down to what, what are we really gonna roll out with this process? And it's okay to have some things that you may not be ready with and to leave those for future amendment processes if, if they're not time pressing.
Yeah, and one thing that we talked about, John, correct me if I'm wrong. The property for projects, it doesn't necessarily, there isn't a time, you don't have to worry about that twenty years or whatever that, that can be on there, but the income producing parcels, you do have that clock.
Yeah, I mean, and, and you, you should keep that in mind, I think. With these economic development TIF areas. If you add, I'm just making this up, a hundred taxable parcels right now. Let's say sixty of them are wind turbines and the other forty are just ground that you hope will develop. Once any one of those parcels starts collecting TIF under the twenty year clock, the clock is gonna run against all one hundred parcels. So it, unlike the old days before two thousand twelve, with these economic development areas, it really does not pay to be speculative or to play come see. On the TIF production side of things, we urge clients to just add the properties that you really are aware are gonna develop and be actually involved with TIF production or will be serving as the site of one of your projects in the short term. And if there's other properties that you're hoping, man, I, I hope those will develop, but there's no prospects yet. It might be wiser to just leave those out for now. And if those prospects come home and they are gonna develop three years from now, we add them then, so that you're not burning down your twenty year TIF collection limit prematurely.
I would agree with that, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, if we, if we've got projects in the hopper, we know they're coming, go for it, but until, until then, yeah, we don't want to start that clock if we're not gonna utilize it.
John, not only does it start the clock, doesn't it lock in the assessed value for TIF purposes?
Yeah, which could be viewed as an advantage if you think that there's gonna be an inflationary trend with respect to evaluations, because it it could be managed, but yeah, you do, if it's a risk, run the risk of, of having that common frozen base established for all of that ground.
Which means if something comes, comes later on, you may end up taking it out and putting it back in again.
You could.
Change that value, which is just a waste of time putting it in at the present time.
And, right, and which, we, we do that with some regularity right now to help clients manage the fading twenty year clock, you know? A client added twenty parcels to an industrial park back in nineteen ninety eight, it's subject to a twenty year limit. Only five or six of those parcels developed. And now, now they're wanting to do something because another five of them are gonna develop. We, we can solve for that, but we have to go through some extra rigmarole of deleting properties and reconstituting new urban renewal areas, which it can be done, but it's just extra rigmarole that you wouldn't have to have gone through if you left it out in the first place.
Makes sense.
Yep.
Still sense. So basically you want from us then, just a nailed down list, is that what I'm getting out of this conversation?
Whenever, whenever you're ready to roll this thing out, we are gonna need that. We're gonna need that refined list saying, okay, we want these three projects or these three, four or four projects or what have you. Here's all the ground we think we need to add, and then with respect to each of those projects, we're just gonna need, A- Amy and I are gonna need to understand enough of what you want and what you think those projects will entail for us to be able to draw up this plan amendment and the hearing notices and, you know, give the public an accurate snapshot of what we're gonna be getting up to. I don't think you're gonna have a lot of trouble if you're wanting to include the courthouse project. I, I'm not talking about attaching plans and specifications here, I, I, I'm talking about a very summary overview of the project and the maximum amount of TIF. Similarly, with the culvert bridge and highway work, I don't think you're gonna struggle much with that. It's enough for us to say we're doing you know, culvert bridge and highway work, we need to give the locations, so if it's highway R from point A to point B, well, we, we identify that, right, so we, we do need to know locations. But outside of that, I don't think you're gonna have a big struggle describing what those projects are about, again, maximum on a TIF might be the biggest head scratcher. The guarantee, I'm not sure I entirely understand where things are at with that. So you may need to do some educating with me before we jump that one off. But again, at the plan amendment level, which is the first step we'll take, you don't have to have all the detail in the world, you just need to be able to give a again, a kind of a summary description. And so my, my guess is, the most elusive one that I've heard of for you folks would be like if you think you want to do TIF rebate agreements, but if your negotiations with the businesses are not maybe far enough down the road for you to really be able to give a fulsome description and a maximum amount of TIF, but m- maybe you're there and, and, and that's good too. But that's the kind of stuff we're gonna need.
Well, I guess we should put it down on a piece of paper. Forward the priorities, I mean, I think we know what it is. Amongst us here, we just gotta put it on paper and try to get you cost estimates or approximation of, of dollars, I guess, that we wanna would like to utilize.
Yep, that sounds like just the ticket. Progress.
Well, thank you for your time, John.
Yeah.
You're welcome, you know where to find us if you need us, happy to have you bounce things off of us or what have you, so.
Okay.
Just let us know.
Okay, thanks, John.
Good luck surviving Monday and have a good week.
See you, John.
Alright.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
The map amendment discussion.
Yeah.
From what he's telling me, a lot of these parcels have nothing coming on them, so it'd be ridiculous to put them in now. But we need to know from via field if they got plans, because we might want to do via fields parcels.
And is there value in that bunker or not?
That, yeah, so you gotta figure out if that's considered.
Need to find that out, but yeah, the other ones where they haven't got anything coming, put them in now. According to him and my theory, why start the twenty year clock, why start the assessed value, right? Or lock the values in right now for TIF? When it, we probably have to take them out and put them back in again later, when a business does come down the road, you know? It might come tomorrow, but it may not come for ten years either. But I think with via field, considering they've got stuff, we need to find out where they stand on it, which ones they're gonna do so we can get those parcels in there.
Right.
You agree?
No, I, yeah, that's, makes sense there, I mean, it's doesn't really make sense to put this property unless you know something's coming with the next year, eighteen months. And the vehicle property would be probably one, I mean, maybe that's what the other ones are looking at too, maybe there's a big.
Yeah, maybe it's a big deal with all of them.
I know.
But we need to know.
And well, Manly want that, because some of the parcels. And well, manly want that, because some of the parcels were within city limits, too.
Yeah, manly would.
And it was all within the two mile.
Right.
But they have.
I would hope, I would assume manly would want to get involved and get the stuff at least within the city limits. They wanted the other or whatever, I guess it wouldn't much matter, but I I think the one where the bunker is at, we need to find out. And I can reach out to them because I've kind of been sent emails from them anyways, basically talking up of expansion or stuff like that. We need to just maybe see if they have a two to three year plan or three to five year plan on what they want to do because.
Think they do. I don't know for sure.
Yeah, and I I know all that stuff gets kept quiet until
Yep.
the last minute, which is totally fine.
But for us to put it in, we need to have them.
Yeah.
What's going on here.
We need to have a pretty good indication that they're gonna do it.
The property they're looking to put it in, I mean, they don't own enough property there now.
Right, if they're gonna buy more, if they're gonna revamp. They've got some old structures there that probably should have went a hundred years ago, but so I don't know, maybe they're gonna get into removing some of that, too. Yep. And then you get the addition of rail and stuff going through there if that happens, but. So I'll reach out to the field a little bit and see.
Otherwise, you're working with ready shields and pipeline.
Yeah, yeah.
We just need to get that more information on it.
Yep, and it's. Yeah. As of now, it's still the same that we've been discussing is is the guarantee which they're working with the local bank on financing that pipeline. And that anything, any incentive that would be in that property as far as coming from that generation of money is is gonna go probably urban revitalization just for the, and that's just for the higher quality jobs money, because they'll actually gain a bunch of tax savings from the state on that way more than we can ever give them by going that route, so. It that seems to be the best route for them. So. And that would just be something we worked through my cog with, like we did with Sukka on their expansion, so. To me, all I see is is the pipeline guarantee, our road and bridge, bridges that Rich gave a list on the necessities, which is pretty much all of the whole list of bridges and then a couple stretches of road. And then
More.
And then the courthouse project, you know, you have more in the future, but this, just wait, I think we could, I think we can with with those numbers, I think we could actually get that, those projects done and still have a buffer, a pretty good buffer, so that if there's room to do more in two to three years, but that may speed up your five year plan a little bit, we'll try to do that. But for now, at least, let's go after those bridges for sure that we know, because I I've been out a lot. There's a lot embargo side. There's a lot of ten ton bridges out there that need to be. You know what I mean? It is.
So put them in for the next three years roughly?
Yeah, I mean, we we know Rich has got a list. Yeah, well, and you know as well as I do, that list changes every two years because stuff and I don't know that we're ever going to catch up to it. We always want to minimize that. What doesn't help, though, is when they change the code and they started making us document and post for special hall vehicles, because truck configurations are changing. Yes. And that changes how these older bridges were, you know, the older bridges were designed under a different standard, and so you know, it seems to get, it seems to cost us a lot of money to try to accommodate for current truck changes that change a lot easier than redesigning a new bridge or trying to to fix a bridge to take those loads. I mean. Consider the fact that a bridge lasts eighty years. We don't know what happens in that eighty years. It's designed for the now. We don't know what's gonna, maybe we'll start getting hovering vehicles. We want to revoke bridges, you know, I mean, you can start talking that way, too, which, you know. Or if the flood comes, we're all gonna vote anyways. Right, so. We do have to want to work. But so that's part of the issue is that laws keep changing. I know that, you know, they they won't give them anything else, but you know, when when it changes like that, they're posted, they can take the legal loads, but some of these are posted because of the special all type vehicles where you've got a dump truck with five axes or six axes on it.
What's a governor's proclamation that comes every fall affect those bridge loads, you know?
Legally, legally, they're not supposed to drive over bridges that's posted.
Regardless, regardless of special weights, but I mean.
If they say ninety thousand pound trucks are good on the roads, it's fine, but it's not legal to go over a bridge that way.
Like you said, these bridges are designed, that's why I say, you know, you've got expanded limits from the fall, I just curious about even affects a bridge, it's not.
Technically. Do you design them for that or? The new stuff we're designing for higher loads, but the old stuff isn't designed for that, so.
Yeah.
So if you designed a bridge tomorrow, would you design it to to handle? I can't remember what the. Ninety thousand.
Trails, too, you know.
Yeah, we do the H I, it's H L nine three loads, I might have to go back and look what those are, but they should, they're designed for newer.
Loads are getting bigger, and I mean, it's not gonna be uncommon to see that expand the limit at some point.
Right.
Be seasonal.
That was one of the things that was in legislature was the overweight permit, a one time permit.
Yeah.
Well, the overweight.
And here's the thing, when you look at the permits, it's not necessarily permitting the bridges, it's only permitting the roads.
The roads, correct. I mean, that's because that.
If you've got a ninety thousand pound load in a bridge that takes thirty thousand pounds, you can't go over it depending on your accident.
It's only a state proclamation, too. It doesn't affect your federal.
Right. And this one permit, this one stop shop, pretty interesting. Just says that you go to the state, you get your permit, you're legal, but you still unless we can evaluate the bridge and let you know that it's okay to take that, whether you're not legally supposed to go over bridges that are posted if your load's heavier than that.
Right.
Now you have these these haul vehicles where they're hauling a crane and stuff, and you go through and you look at the you know, you take a two hundred thousand pound load and you put it over a bridge, well, if the axle configure, if the axle configurations are fine, then technically the bridge should be fine, but some of these configurations are so messed up. I mean, how do you, you know, you get a hundred and fifty foot bridge and you got a load that's sixty feet long that weighs two hundred thousand pounds, well, all that load is on the bridge at once, and so you got to start looking a little bit different. You know, how do you value?
Well, it's kind of priority, listen, I guess we'll need to read up there, I think. See that. We're kind of moving forward a bit. See what it all looks like.
And can you pin down a legal description on the pipe, where the pipeline's going?
Yeah, I've got a map of it.
Oh, we need to get that into.
Well, yeah.
I don't know if Jeff helps or if you can help or I I I don't know. Yeah, maybe.
And I can, I can do it. It's just a matter of road from here to here, here to here, to here, to here, and then, yeah, I'll take care of it. I got, because I sent it to John and I explained. I think, and then I'll go back and look, but I'll 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 send that to you. Break it down, since it's, yeah, from this point north on this road, east on that road, north on this road and then east again, so. But I'll do that, too. I think everything I gave you, though, had the right, you know, the bridges were all identified with a northern and eastern. And the road were from here, here. Yeah, yeah. That's all this, right? Forward that to Jackie then. Because I I sent it to John, so.
Anything else on the map amendment discussion?
I think so. I think we should get a nail about it, I guess. So I guess that one thing would be is we need to consider in this, as far as expenditures, but revenues, are we going to set aside portion of those turbines to go
Oh.
into the tax roll? That's just, that's that's part of it, it's just on the revenue side, so that's something I guess we're all gonna think about and relay that back to as if there's seventy four out there, or seventy six, seventy six, and do we want to tax roll fifteen of them and take the rest, you know, that's to see where those numbers work out with.
Pinpoint.
No, you you can do a percentage.
You can do a percentage, too. Would it be better to pinpoint?
I, it sounds like percentage.
Percentage, the same thing.
Because it's gonna probably come in as a bulk, bulk number, and if we just say twenty percent's on tax roll, eighty percent's going that way, then that number should be established on.
And of course, we wouldn't want to do them on the ones that are inside city limits.
As far as tax roll or?
Yeah.
Well, inside the two miles.
Yeah.
We just got to get their permission if we, yeah, that's just more of a permission thing. If we did tax roll, that would be, those would be the ones to tax roll, because then schools and whoever else, everybody gets all their money. Regardless, so.
Yeah, we just need, we also need, while you're on the phone with Ready Fuels, we need some idea of what kind of a how much they're gonna put in down there, so we can get some idea of how much of value. We've been asking for that for a couple of months here, so.
It should be able to tell us.
Should be getting close enough, they could give us some idea.
You know, sort of hundred dollar property here is a hundred million dollar project.
Yeah, that's, the total cost is over two hundred, but that doesn't mean it's gonna be valued at that.
It's not, yeah, we'd like to have an idea of what the value is going to be.
That's gonna be the bill.
Okay. Mark. Coincidence policy recommendation.
So coming out of the security meeting meetings over the last couple of months, the sheriff and one of his deputies had went to active shooter training and then that was given, they went to that, and one of the things their takeaway from that was the importance of having a a critical incident recovery policies and plans for not just active shooter incidents, but any kind of critical incidents where your employees of the county might be involved in, or anytime there's an incident on the county facilities or properties. And we didn't really have anything like that in our emergency action plan, and so when I did some searching around, found some examples and kind of came up with what I thought was the best fit for now, and we we worked on it for a little bit and gave everybody on the security committee a chance to look at it and and give some input and stuff and and our last meeting, there was a motion to bring it to the supervisors for their recommendation for supervisors to look at it and then move it towards adding it to the emergency action plan for the county. Hopefully, you guys all had the chance to see it.
Yeah, that's true.
It kind of says, you know, it's it's a framework or guidelines would say for the things to consider after an act, you know, after an incident. You know, and and the sheriff said that that was really in the the training that he went to, they were talking that that was an an area where a lot of places that have incidents. It's a huge area of liability and stuff, you know, because they didn't have those kind of plans. I guess, you know. For me, that's not a, that's not the main reason you do that kind of stuff. I mean, that, sure, that's a reason, because it's liability. But I think it's the right thing to do to take care of your people, you know, help them recover. Get them back, you know, that's part of your continuity of operations is, you know. It's gonna be hard enough for people to come back into a workplace after a situation like that anyway. What if they don't have the support from their employer and from their coworkers and stuff like that? And from the the system per se to to do that and and stuff, you know. They may not decide to come back to work, then they just decide, you know, hey, I want to do a different type of work, or I may not want to, I can't come back to work or whatever. And so that's going to make it hard for the county to continue to be able to serve their citizens. You know, doing what they do, so by having the plan, hopefully that helps you know, prevent that or lessen the stress, and we're gonna, obviously, it's gonna be very stressful for everybody involved, whether you were actually there or you just fortunate enough to maybe not be there, but you still knew people that were there and stuff, and so it's gonna take time to, so this, it's a it's a type guide for getting through that, you know. Does it have all the answers? Absolutely or not? Is it, is it late, you know, is it written in stone? Absolutely, I don't know how to do it. No, it's just things to think about, things, you know, a way, one of many ways to get things done, so. We we all agree that it probably would be best to keep reviewing it and looking at, you know, as like many things in the early stages, there's going to be more plans like this out there available for review. We'll keep looking at them and seeing, you know, pulling pieces that we like out of those and add them to this, you know, every couple of years, improving it, making it better.
So it's basically your recommend, we are, we're recommending we are.
That's the security. We moved it to the board for their consideration.
So there's a lot of chance to look at it, I guess.
Yeah.
Questions or concerns. I mean, it's just, except starting point, you have nothing now, and it's definitely a good move, I think.
We don't, we don't need the question of after something happens, do you have this policy plan? Yeah, exactly. We tried to be proactive on this, so I'll make a motion to to approve the critical incident policy and plan and add it to our emergency action.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all's a favor, say, aye, aye. Oh, same sign, motion will carry.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeff.
The zoning commission done a bunch of work the last couple of months, just as a matter of background. On January twenty four, twenty twenty two, the Board of Supervisors discussed issues and procedures for extending countywide zoning. And NICO presented the process to be followed for such a consideration. The zoning commission having responsibility in the county to review and recommend zoning ordinance and zone assignments for the board took up the work to perform that research and develop recommendations related to this topic. The commission began this work on February second, twenty twenty two. The overall goal of the work by the commission was to review the purpose of zoning to determine whether zoning across all townships was appropriate. And if so, to determine initial zone assignments to townships, which would be encompassed under the current zoning ordinance guidelines. The commission expressly decided to follow the NICO recommendations not to pursue any updates to the existing zoning ordinance at this time, or review zoning assignments in the townships that currently fall under purview of the ordinance, Brookfield, Danville and Hartland Townships. The commission held multiple meetings focused on discussion of the extension of zoning purview and determination of initial zone assignments. Additionally, it became evident during this process that as a result of such a minority zoning in the county, as presently the case, there are known and likely erroneous zone assignments in the currently zoned townships. The commission did not make any effort to identify or address those lands. We focused entirely on zone assignments that would be in the newly covered townships. The commission heard from supervisors individually on their thoughts and recommendations related to these topics and worked with NICO on concepts and recommendations. During February and March, the commission also provided multiple official public notices and newspapers of record and held two separate public hearings for comment. In early March, the commission also caused letters to be mailed to all landowners in the nine townships under consideration for zoning. Unfortunately, due to errors made by the bulk mailing company, many of those letters arrived later than planned. On learning this, the commission extended the comment period by one week. Just as an addendum to the written comments here. We did get word from that mailing company what their error was. They sent stuff out under standard postage instead of first class postage, and that's why it took a lot longer. As a result of their error, because we had told them it had to be in mailboxes, not later than the twenty first or twenty second of March. They said that they would reimburse the county for their fees. They can't reimburse the postage, but they're going to reimburse the county for the fees that they charged for the process, and so as soon as we see that reimbursement come through, we'll make sure to get the check to Jackie. On the development of final recommendations, the recommendations we're presenting here today is the culmination of several iterations of detail. Our first public hearing was to hear comments on the concept of the zoning extension of the zoning ordinance applicability countywide as a result of such vote by the zoning commission in February. We received no comment opposing this direction during the public hearing held in February twenty second, twenty twenty two. After work with NICOG and multiple iterations of zone assignments, the commission published proposed zone assignments on March eighth online and at the courthouse and caused public notice to be published in all papers of record for the county. The commission held a second public hearing on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty two for comments on those assignments. The plan put forth by the commission was to assign the zone of agriculture A one to all lands in the nine townships, with the exception of those parcels clearly identified as having predominantly non-ag uses such as gravel pit, scrap yards, commercial properties and so on. Of the approximately thirty five, forty persons that attended that meeting or provided comments afterwards, a few persons spoke of concerns predominantly related to tax questions relate which were addressed by the commission during the meeting and told them, no, zoning has no impact on taxes. And a few persons had general questions. The commission also reviewed the ag exemption with with attendees. A few persons spoke directly to the proposed zone assignments to their parcels, asking for additional parcels to be zoned as non-ag. That's predominantly the gravel pits, because we had taken the approach that if there was a parcel that had a pit in part of it, but was being farmed in the other part of it, we took the approach that we don't know how far that pit is intended to extend. So we said, well, it could be zoned as ag, they can continue to use the pit, they just wouldn't be able to extend it if it was ag. And all of the gravel pit owners contacted us and said, we want those parcels identified as industrial. Only two people provided comment in in opposition to zoning in general, one during the meeting and and one the last week. Subsequent to the public hearing and comments provided to the zoning commission, zoning commission met April sixth to discuss an updated list of zone assignments. A vote was held to reaffirm the recommendation to extend applicability of the existing zoning ordinance to apply countywide and to make recommendations for zone assignments consistent with the stated plan. We have an enclosure that we'll provide that gives the details of those properties that we think should be zoned as non-ag. That vote passed unanimously. Our recommendation specifically is the unanimous recommendation of the zoning commission that the existing zoning ordinance should apply equally to all townships of the county. To do otherwise would be to treat citizens of the county unequally and to preclude a majority of the residents from protections provided to others with regard to a voice in the process of development in the county. Number two, assuming our recommendation with regard to countywide zoning is carried by the supervisors, the enclosure provides initial zone assignment recommendations for the land encompassed by the nine townships not already zoned. This recommendation represents a diligent best effort at assigning zoning based on current known and near term use of the land. It's recognized, however, that there may be less obvious individual parcels that should be zoned as non-ag. Those zone changes to those lands may be addressed at a later date when those lands are made known to the zoning commission. And the zoning ordinance provides a process for such changes. Number three, it's recommended that if the supervisors extend zoning applicability per these recommendations, that there be a six month fee free period for zoning changes. Number four, during this process, it became evident that there are aspects of the text of the current zoning ordinance that should be updated and that there may be zone assignment errors in Brookfield, Danville, and Hartland Townships as a result of the historic low focus of zoning in the county. Recognizing that a zoning is extended by the supervisors, that membership of the zoning commission would likely be changed. We decided to defer all such work until after the zoning decisions by the supervisors. There are, however, several things related to the text of the ordinance that should be reviewed with an eye for change that should be taken up at the earliest opportunity. The enclosure, as I said, will provide copies of this. It lists a number of parcels that we feel should not be ag. In general, the assignment says all land in the unincorporated areas of townships of Barton, Bristol, Deer Creek, Furl, Grove, Kenset, Lincoln, Silver Lake, and Union should be zoned as agriculture, with the exception of the properties listed below and the properties within two miles of the Manly city limits, which should be zoned comparable to the zone assignments currently in place by the city of Manly via their two mile extraterritorial zone claim. Matt O'Brien from NICOG told us that even though Manly has that two mile extraterritorial claim now, that's because the county did not claim zoning on that unincorporated land. That if the county does zone the unincorporated land in the township, that Manly would have to rework with the county probably through a twenty eight E agreement on that two mile extraterritorial zone. So our recommendation is take whatever Manly has zone properties in that two mile zone, use a county comparable zone designation. And then there shouldn't be any changes to the people. Zone assignments currently in place for the unincorporated areas of the townships of Brookfield, Danville, and Hartland should remain as assigned until such time the zone changes are deemed appropriate per guidance in the Worth County zoning ordinance. Here are copies of the recommendation and details. Be happy to address any questions.
Um, I guess that's a good thing. I guess that's like these rock quarries and everybody did come forward right away and state, you know.
Yeah, they they asked that the those partial parcels, and in fact, they have some parcels that have no mining activities right now, but they say we plan to extend into that. So we would prefer just make them industrial as is now. That way they don't have to go through a rezoning in the future.
True. So then they can just continue as.
They can just continue their operation as they are. And the farming that's occurring on some of those parcels, it can continue to to occur because it's in place. You know, if you were to extend zoning, it would just be existing use of the land that gets to continue. And that's true of anywhere. You know, the the nonconformance that may arise as a result of of zoning can continue in place. They just can't expand it.
And these, this list is just the obvious.
These are just the big ones that are obvious. Yep.
And then as if whatever they would move forward, then anything could be changed accordingly.
Yeah. Yeah, because some of the not, the the lesser obvious, there's a couple of properties in here where there's chemical business that people are operating on their property. There's a few of those that are large enough that are well known to us. So we had included those. There may very well be some others that are out there that we're not aware of that should be zoned as industrial light because of chemical business. If it's purely a seed dealership on a on a property, as long as they don't have a showroom, that's accepted use in the ag zone according to the zoning ordinance. So it can just stay as ag. And you might notice that Bucks down at Manly is listed, even though it's in that two mile zone. That's because Buck contacted us and he explicitly wanted to have his listed. So we did.
So it's that seed dealer showroom. Does that mean a showroom or an office?
A showroom. If it's a showroom where customers are coming in, they're showing product, the zoning ordinance has that caveat that the seed dealership is a is is what do we call it? Primary use, permitted primary use unless it has a showroom. And that caveat then says it has to be zoned as commercial.
Most seed dealerships, if they have an office, have a showroom. That was some.
I know. The the few folks that contacted us that asked us about specifically about seed dealerships, we read him the what the ordinance says about showroom. They go, oh, I don't have a showroom, so I'm okay.
And that's in the existing ordinance now?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not, that's nothing, nothing new. It just applies to those three now, those three townships.
Yes. Yeah, we we didn't make any changes to the zoning ordinance. And and we did see several things that we thought should be addressed. There's some contradictory things. For instance, light industrial has permitted use and conditional use items. So things that you could get a conditional use permit for under light industrial. But then the language in heavy industrial, the first thing it says under permitted use is the things that are listed as conditional use in light industrial. So it it seems kind of odd. One of the other things that struck us, we've got a lot of land. I think we're very fortunate in the county. We've got a lot of land that is public land, wildlife areas and so on. We don't have a zone in the county to that that talks about that kind of land. So it's just, it's ag land right now for ag zone. So and and there's a lot of counties that, you know, they have a separate conservation resource zone designation for for that kind of land. So it's those kinds of things that we saw as we were going through this that just as a result of, you know, being such a low focus, you know, zoning being such a low focus in the county historically. You know, there's just very little changes that have ever happened to that. It needs to be reviewed a little bit more detail and brought up. And I think that's true, no matter what you guys do with zoning, I think those things should be addressed in the ordinance. Right, but we just, we didn't take that up for this effort.
Well, I guess. What's the next step? Public hearing on our end?
Yeah, the next step would be for you guys to, you know, if you're going to extend the applicability of zoning and make these zoning assignments. And and to be clear, if one happens, they both have to happen because as soon as you say this ordinance applies to this land, the first thing that you have to do is assign the zone designations to the land, which is what this enclosure recommendation consists of. So the the board supervisors would have to have a public comment on extending the zoning ordinance to be applicable to all of the townships. Unfortunately, the language of the zoning ordinance is is the 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 text of the ordinance is agnostic with regard to townships. The only thing that is associated with the zoning ordinance that limits its applicability to the three townships is on the title page underneath the title Worth County zoning ordinance, there's a parenthetical there that lists the three townships. So simply striking that parenthetical on the title, it's automatically applicable countywide.
Mark, can you hear me?
Yes.
I I just wanted to clarify as successor classification, as long as farming is principal use, it would be A, even if it was a showroom. So there's a big difference once again between zoning and what I'll classify it as. Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Long as it's a principal use, but some of these, some of these are probably taking in way more dollars in commercial side selling seed and chemicals than they are farming.
Well, egg is still predominant. They protect egg. As long as you're farming that forty acres or eighty acres, that's close to it and it's adjoining, it's still gonna be egg.
As far as you're concerned.
As far as I'm concerned.
As far as zoning, zoning in
So zoning has, they're still.
Totally different things.
Yep.
Zoning assessments are two totally different things, but I get it. You're worried about the taxation side, but I get that, so.
Well, but but people don't want to be zoned commercial. They want A. And so it would be egg. I'm just clarifying that.
Will be ag as far as you're concerned.
Correct. And that's that that affects the assessed value, which the assessed value affects taxation.
Right. So even if it was zoned as commercial, it wouldn't necessarily be assessed as commercial.
Correct, correct. And of course, we'd have to take each one, but the C dealers I know out there, I'd have to look at each one. I would, I would be surprised if they wouldn't be A. I mean, you'd have to, but you know, I can look at something like that, but it is different zoning is different with regards to that showroom, so.
Yeah, no.
It it, I think it would depend on the the parcel as well. I know with the the chemical place, yeah. Yeah, the chemical places, they've parceled a very small distinct area.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Your questions, guys?
I don't, I don't have any more questions for Jeff, but as far as this goes, I'm ready to take the next step and maybe go on the agenda for next week to set a public hearing date.
I am there too.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Jeff. See your board again, thank them as well. I thank them every time I talk.
Yeah.
General assistance discretion, possible action.
Like we're doubling up. Or I should say, we are, we, I think there's some, we can utilize some services with somebody we're already involved with. I think we need to go that route to save some money.
I do too.
You know, this, all this stuff has changed so much. You know, back in ninety, early nineties when WHW was started, it was like the first little region within itself. It's all different now and we can actually, if we can get those services through community action, which.
Cindy and I showed her the description and I mean, if she wants, if we want to, she'll probably come up here and discuss it with us or zoom in with us. Also had a good conversation with the sheriff, you know, and his only comment was, and we will never get another. She's, you know, she could do things in the middle of the night that would get them in and out of mercy quicker, you know, if there's something. But those days are gone.
Yeah.
And the services are still there. That's the key thing. It's just, we've lost that. We'll never have that.
Lost forty years of experience and.
And passion.
Yeah. Yeah.
And knowledge, passion, whatever you want to call it. So I think we need to be looking at this. Like say, if we did have any concerns, Cindy would be happy to talk with us.
But she has the the list of services.
I know. I just showed her that that day and she said, well, we're doing all this stuff.
Right. Yeah, I just, as long as, yeah, we could talk with her as long as if she can cover, if their their group can cover that. And we've already got some representation up here and we're already funding this thing. Let's see if there'd be any extra or if there's an extra expense or whatever. But I just think with with us being a Care Connections, we've got that portion of that covered very, very well. And then now we just need to get this stuff covered to continue with the services, but I would, I would invite her up with with that, if she can, if they're providing those services and would like to provide those services to us.
They are. I mean, they're already doing, it's just that we've had somebody else overriding.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's, that's my understanding.
I would think.
Unless I'm missing something.
Yep.
Has she seen this description?
Well, that's. As I scanned that one, most of it that Ruth did kind of came off from that one, but that's the one Sandy did. So I'd have to say that that one's really accurate as far.
This is basically Ruth's job prescription or whatever. So if you want to send that down to Cindy and then she could come up to us.
That's what I think we should definitely. I definitely think we.
And stuff like that. We end up paying for some of that stuff. Juvenile.
That's some of those little, I mean, some of that will still be paying for, but it's just, I mean, we always have.
Just have an advocate to make sure.
She was. And I think.
Because we had somebody at North Iowa Detention Center again. I don't know why. And I can't get an answer out of anybody.
We're not in North Iowa anymore, right?
No, I don't know how it happened.
We had a hundred and seventy five bucks for two days.
Yeah.
Each day.
The court should, the court should know, the sheriff knows.
Yeah.
And I just get sent around in circles.
Sandy must have trained it, you know.
He's not there now. He's he's in Sioux City now, which that was something new I hadn't seen either, but at least that's under fifty bucks a day. He's not there now, he's, he's in Sioux City now, which that was something new I hadn't seen either, but at least that's under fifty bucks a day. And then is it mental health or is it?
Well, now some of that's becoming mental health because they are actually providing for children. Uh, no, state, state, you know, children's services are becoming more, because it wasn't before. So that, some of that would be, but yeah, having to find out where that gets built. Looking for that for, with mental health as far as that goes.
I just know sitting on this board past five years, I'm not on there right now because we have too many board members, but. Um, and she wanted to downsize, I mean, we're. Every meeting, we sat through two hours of people going through budgets and figures of the exact same thing that Sandy's been covering. You know, and. So, and I was, and you know, back man, and I know why we heard Sandy when she, you know, I know why we did that and, but she's gone. And I'm not saying Ruth doesn't do it too, but it, token is we're down to two counties now, cause Hancock gets pulled out.
Yeah.
On July, I think it was July.
May thirty-first, they're pulling out, so that's, well, that's our next meeting is May thirty-first.
Yeah, the day, yeah. Before they're pulling out.
June first, they're out of.
They'll have one more meeting with us, so they'll be, so you know, getting twenty-eight year old be gone, it'll be just someone to beg. So that means our cost is going.
Yeah.
So how can you withdraw too, you might wanna.
Same thing.
Same thing, we just.
We have to submit a notice that we wanna throw up the twenty-eighty.
Yep.
And then it's thirty days, I think.
I would say probably.
Withdraw and then. Comes out to it, if one of them goes, the one left, then they're the employee of record, they're that, if they wanna keep it, they keep it, it's all on that then.
Do that, so you're out before, or by June thirtieth.
Right.
Hopefully get Cindy, talk to Cindy next week and we're comfortable, I think we would probably, same token to have them in the action. Cindy on her talk to, and if we're comfortable with what she's telling us, we would probably.
Make action.
Agenda for next week and get this thing, whether we do it or not, at least put it out there so we can if we want to.
The services are there, I know that, it's just. Getting the people to own, like Cindy says, you know, it's a matter of sometimes getting brochures around the right place and the public health to be somewhat involved, I mean. Just gotta get the people.
Like, so get to make sure the sheriff's office is on the right page with them and, you know, you know, a little bit of a transition in that. But it, it's working out good, so I think North, uh, Niko will be the same thing, get that little transition through and then it'll, it'll go good. Cause everybody knows which direction.
Which would have called to give them the help they need that day, and that's what they do, I mean, they're there.
And it sounds like they're good at getting federal and state money and. She might wanna check and see if the other counties allot a certain amount of money to them.
Do we did, too, I think, cause I talked to Terry a little bit, I don't know, I can't, I'm not gonna speak for him, but he did say, you know, I mean, like. We all have that all budgeted in right now, I mean, for this coming year, but it's just.
Do we pay towards Niko?
I don't.
Remember seeing as an extra.
I don't think you pay any extra, we're just, we were, remember, and we have, we have representation, I don't know if it's anything you actually, I hate to say it, I don't think you're really, it's a membership. In there, it's, it's a, it's a federal.
But if there's stuff that they don't pay, if we, if we, if you want a certain amount that you would.
Like for the funerals, and you know, we're gonna have to budget for. Most of the other stuff is provided.
What do we pay WHW?
Uh, it's Sandy's salary right now and some office expenses and.
Thirty thousand plus other, so.
A, a third of it.
The whole thing was like, between Ruth and her was.
Well, we raised it by fifteen thousand when Ruth took over.
To take over the whole thing.
Hundred thousand dollars were the, between everything, divided by three.
Yeah, I'll get you, what budget Sandy was.
That's fine. Just, I just, it's nice to see that number, I like, see numbers like that once in a while. Um, yeah, that's, let's put on the agenda and discuss it all next week, yes, see if she can come up next week and then discuss the. The WHW twenty-eighty, it's in fact, or just after.
She, for, I didn't got, she was talking about coming around and talking to us more, making us more aware of what they have anyway, she's gonna try to hit some of the local boards. Something I haven't done in the past. Just started from last couple of years, the other director that left, so. She's, also has a passion for some of this stuff, it's in the, I mean, the whole group does down there, they're. Pretty amazing people, so I'm hoping we can make this work.
Sounds good to me.
And send her a copy of that. So that she kinda knows what Sandy's done. She can let us know what she can't.
If there's, if there's a gap in there.
There's a gap in there, we gotta cover something.
Yeah. Should, we should.
And then do you have, do you get me somebody's email or?
I might have it, I, she sends emails, it comes directly from Niko. Cause we always have to go on a board, we gotta go on, get an email and then we gotta go on a board for the fundamentals. Yeah, okay. FY twenty-three community funding, project funding. We did, thank you, yep.
And unless you wanna talk about it, then.
That's a project, if you wanna think of something for next year, that comes this time, you gotta start, you know, start now. And have it, if it's something that we're looking that we maybe can do anyways, and this comes opportunity comes up, then you can just shove a set of plans at them and say. We're hoping to do this, but the funding is, you know, maybe, maybe you'll get it, I don't know.
So it'd be nice to know dollar amounts or anything, it just seems so random.
Right. And then it depends on the project, if they like it or not, do they push, do they lobby hard for it and try to get you the funding, or is it one of those like, uh?
Was it like conservation type projects and?
One of them on there was, I just spotted cybersecurity and I spotted conservation.
The conservation stuff, when you read what, how it's broke down.
Yeah.
It, it really would just be land acquisition.
That's the way I read it too, is land acquisition.
Which, I mean, it's great, but at the same time, we don't knock indoors asking to buy land, so. I mean, you know, for us, it's, we don't know we have a project until someone calls us.
The only other one I noticed was waterways around there. Well.
Yeah, maybe.
I didn't, this is the, I did read.
It's a show.
They have water and wastewater infrastructure is one of their things, but it's. That's another thing, if, you know. We do have a project. I mean, we do have a project, it's already been let, but.
Doesn't say you couldn't.
No, and that's, that's the thing, is that, I don't know if that's something that fits into it or not. If he's far enough along with that design to shove that project out there, I just talked to him last week and he's got. He's close on everything.
Has to be in by fifteenth Friday.
Call Jason.
That's the way I read it.
I'll call him today and see how close he is, and I'll look at that, I've got that paperwork.
Yeah, twelve PM.
I mean. For something else.
Yeah.
Worst they could do is not, I mean, it's gonna be a process regardless, wouldn't hurt throw it out there.
Right, if we're, if we're at that point of a project, then maybe.
I think you gotta throw it out there. Oh, I didn't read anything in there, did they say when they were gonna make a decision on these projects?
I don't think it said when they're making the decision.
Yeah, there, that's, that was my problem.
It just says when it, when they have to be submitted by is what it says.
Fifteenth, right?
Yep.
Yep.
So I'm guessing they've already allocated the funds per se, but now they just have to take the projects and put it into the funds.
That's kinda the way I understand it, is it's, it's an. Like, and if, and if Hanson's office likes the project, then they're probably gonna push forward a little harder, you know.
And somewhere she wants to get more votes or less.
Right.
There wasn't a lot of them, there was like. A total of fifteen that they were gonna look at and all of those wouldn't be accepted, did you read that?
Fifteen for her of State Iowa. Okay, Melissa is on her way to the line, I think, should send a list to what she's gonna be doing, so. Chris is not on, okay, we have department heads, anything there?
Back, uh, the RFP. For the wastewater. Oh, we, when is that gotta be?
So, I'll ask Jason too, but he was.
He's getting deadlines worked on.
Yeah, cause I think the week of the sixteenth, he's gone, so I think we're probably gonna be the twenty-third. He was gonna get it pushed out, he was gonna make the necessary changes. And it, and shut it out, so we should have. Yeah, should be out at home, so I'll talk to him.
He's on top of it.
She knows.
You got an email on it? All I got was an email that said he'd been, that AJ contacted him and he was working on the art.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But he didn't have anything else in there besides that.
Getting appropriate dates and things, he said, and whatever, so, he's, he's, it's in the process.
I'll tell him, just make sure he let it out there.
Yep. Yeah, we've already asked him so far as approval for days, and he just has to get it done properly.
Yeah.
It's in his support, so. Nothing else from the department heads or anything from department heads? Truce has said, yeah, just the boat renewals. All's good, boat renewals coming in, folks proceeding for some license as well.
Right.
Okay. There's nothing else. Okay, is that tomorrow? Oh, yeah, oh, yes. The big storm tomorrow, right?
Big storm tomorrow.
Now there's the rest, yeah?
Yeah, true.
Take some more sheds down. Just, just the ones that have been re- reconstructed. I didn't get it re-screwed yet, so.
They're being recorded.
Uh, you can't force hell, I can't make it hail, so, it has been fixed. Um, okay, so supervisor.
All I had was the WHW meeting. And you guys are both at it, and we just got done talking. Oh, okay.
This is me and you.
Just, well, we told you Hancock's, yeah, the date, and Ruth put together her budget and her report.
Yep.
As the interim director for right now.
Yeah, she had a lot, she was trying to get a lot of clarification, what she's supposed to be doing, so it's kinda. What she was doing for. I'm kind of thinking that's just, I, nice person, that's not the point, but kinda like. You've been there how many years, if you were paying attention, you don't know what you were doing.
And, and we went from a hundred percent of the poverty level to a hundred and fifteen percent, and we decided that. Anybody that had a job shouldn't be. Shouldn't have it come out of their total amount for the pay program, in other words, you shouldn't be penalized because you got a job.
If you're like right at the poverty levels, a lot of situations are just right at or slightly above, and then it's affecting them, it's.
We didn't think the job should interfere with that, so we took that out of the, out of the. The calculations.
And encourage workers and discourage them.
Yeah, right.
So then if Ruth is working for WHW now, who is our mental? Is what, wasn't she the mental health person before, how was she getting paid before?
She's doing both of them, and that's why we increased it by fifteen thousand.
She's, she's been working for WHW, her and Sandy. Um, Sandy's, you know, we're technically retired and her salary was knocked down, but, um, there had both been employees there. And so.
It was all part of the previous mental health region, as well, it came about, and I understand, right? She's been there now seven.
Seven or eight years. You just, you always install Sandy because she was.
And she is covering both of them right now.
Yes.
It was fifteen thousand that they tacked on to.
To the total.
To the total, while she does this.
So does she get salary out of the region too, no?
It's just WHW.
Oh, okay.
Just WHW. Once again, double up.
So one person and we're paying fifty, fifteen thousand dollars more?
Then what she was getting, she was getting. Total for the two of them was like eighty something, if I remember.
Yep.
So then we dropped it back to one position, give her all the responsibility, we just offered it to her and she must have took it.
As in, as.
Appointed her, cause there was a lot of other stuff going on.
So just all interim.
Is that for some reason I thought she was part of the region or something?
I mean, you know, Sandy was, I mean, you know, during.
Like I say, all that stuff's changed so much, so it's. Um, I had shore up watershed meeting. That's going good, we're working on our, we're working on a comprehensive plan. To submit to the DNR for our grants that we received, and. Once we get that established and all done, then we can maybe, we can start going for further funding and get, you get somebody hired to. Work the shore up watershed and then start going for grant monies on projects and all that good stuff, so. Really good group and a lot of good representation going on over there, so everybody's getting involved, they're getting more and more people involved too, so. And then I did meet with, um, Chad Nelson. On discussion now with our ARP committee, had been discussing the possible. Building for future drive-through clinics or anything like that, um, so we did have a little discussion on, uh, possibly a spot out at the fairgrounds. Um, and then we'll just, we'll discuss that with our ARP group next time we meet, committee next time we meet. Possibilities out there, so.
Okay.
Good, but that's.
Okay, so I did have a security meeting, which we addressed here today, and then I was met with Cindy Davis down there in Niko to kinda get. Process started and was, I mean, I've always been impressed with what they do down there, as a board and stuff, but. So hopefully we meet that work, I also met with Scott, our IMWC rep. Just went over how we're doing, um, we're getting there, we're still, what was it, uh? Think about one more year and we. Our dem, our tendencies should start to go down. Our mod, that mod should start changing, cause we're gonna drop off some real bad stuff and, and. Three of the, three of them will actually drop off, I think, as a model next year, anyways, we should start to see, as long as we can maintain what we're doing. We're actually doing really good, there's some things we are doing really good, this was glad, good to hear, um. Not sure, do we do physicals for all departments right now, that's one thing he's recommended, if we don't, anytime you hire employee, you know, anything, I mean, any lifting that's going on. Those kind of things, you should have physical done, when you hire that new. Pre-employment type physicals, that's one thing he really recommends.
I know, you guys do, right, and Rhodes does, but probably should be.
He said all offices countywide would be recommended.
And we don't do that, yeah.
So it's something we should be considering, that's one thing he said, um. And continue to, at least Mark, you know, their HR person and, you know, the return to work type of stuff, work with her, and she can help you and give, you know. So work with her as much as we can, and, and one reason we're so high is, so over the last ten years, we've collected a hundred and twenty percent of what we paid in. That's one reason, so, and the last five years is two hundred and thirty-three percent. So, uh, we need to continue to work on education, education, you know, all offices, you can't afford to have. Any more claims, you know, for silly stuff, if we can avoid it, or, it is what it is, people do get hurt, I understand that. Try to stay on top of that stuff, so. And fortunately, secondary roads, you're fifty-two percent of it, and five incidents in the last fifteen, last fifteen, or five out of the last fifteen claims that come from you guys. For enforcement, there's quite a few claims too, but they're not as big a claims, thankfully, fortunately, so. And people are doing a good job, seventy-six calls to a company nurse in the last six years, so that's, that, he was, that's pretty good, he said. And twenty-one, only twenty-one of them became cases, which is a good stat, so, keep calling that company nurse, you know, and don't, don't wait. That's one thing, is that don't wait five days and then call the company nurse, you know, do it right away when it happens.
Yeah, moment, you forget, pretty soon it's like, oh, we.
First twenty-four hours that you can do it, I mean, as a good old company nurse, and try to follow all the procedures, that really helps a lot, so, but we are getting there. So, steps were taken by, you know, handling, you know, hiring the guy to help with stuff, and that's, that's all positive stuff. He's, he's real happy with how we're handling this right now, so let's try to keep up the good work, so. Uh, I guess it's all I had. We'll take a motion too, or we need anything else for next week's agenda?
When you say next WHW, you know?
For May thirty-first. Yeah.
Do you know what time?
Thirty-first of Tuesday? We'll meet, when a bag will meet, Tuesday. I'm betting it's, we'll meet, Winnebago will meet, they meet Tuesdays.
I've got one P M. down.
It's probably in the afternoon.
I think, yeah.
I got one down, that's why I plugged it in that day.
What we're both meeting that day.
Yeah, one P M. in Winnebago County.
That's right.
And I didn't know, I got one yes or one try to on the top of my trail meeting, so I just threw it in there, so you're covered.
I don't think I'll be back, I'll be back in class all day.
I, yeah, I didn't.
That's fine.
Got in that discussion about a year ago here, maybe eight months ago.
Yep.
And we were trying to figure out at that time who's gonna, who's gonna be responsible for certain things, you know.
And I've been reaching out to you, I think, cause I know one of the things was, is doing fat buyer, fat tire biking and we'll chill.
Our board actually approved that last year, so.
That's one of the things I saw on the emails.
And then it showed a list of the maintenance or the things that the cities of Hamlet Town and Fertile was gonna do. But I noticed in there that if we end up having to hire somebody to take it over because we can't quite cover it, then we take on everything.
Yeah. If we hired another person.
So, yeah, I'm gonna try to make it.
I will not be there, we have a regular board meeting.
Well, you are in discussion.
Yeah, I go to almost every meeting, just.
I haven't been in a while, I just haven't been in a meeting, so. Plan on trying to go that night, so.
Mark, all motion good here.
All right. Thanks, everyone. All right.